State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a lawnmower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero-turn motors. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us. We'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Gwinne and Fayette. We've been serving the people of northwest Alabama for 23 some-odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello. Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition.
We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gwinne to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, certified funeral service practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 2nd, 2023 Winfield City Council Meeting. It's going to be a very short agenda. I thought we had a meeting last week. There's not a whole lot happened since that meeting, so that's why there's not a whole lot on the meeting for tonight. First time on the agenda is approving minutes for the April 25th, 2023 Council Meeting. I did ask for most of the approval. Nobody's got a question. James made it on Keith's second. All in favor. Next time on the agenda is going to be old business. James, I'll start with you if you got any old business. You good? Keith?
Brett was on schedule today. Brett was on schedule with, uh, have officers to assist in traffic control today, and it never happened, never showed up. Angie has sent in an email asking for explanation or whatever, and hasn't received nothing back yet.
Want to talk about the Ken?
No, we still, I advised Luke to give us a revised cost estimate, but I don't think unless this is it. It's bad to send it straight on to Angie. She skipped me, so that's fine. Does it look better? See, we, it looks better because we're still in the same neighborhood, and we added, I see the last one there, we added on that medical drive issue over there between the two, and then...
Well, it looks like they all went down except for one.
It went down about a hundred thousand or so, plus, and then you added another drive to it, so that's, whoever that is, you may have subtract some more.
And now for both of these?
You got the high pound or something?
Went from 46,032 to 50,045.
Anybody got any comment or?
So why did that one go up?
Which one?
Which it says include parking on this one.
That's why it went up. Probably, it wanted to go five, six thousand? Four thousand. Because that road, you know, Kirkwood runs out, it goes across 171, but where it runs out right here, the asphalt, that asphalt goes all the way up to the church, the asphalt goes all the way up to the church building, and then it goes all the way against that church parking lot. So if not standard 12 or 20 foot wide, it's probably more like feet or 60 foot wide in that, in that area from 171 to the back of the parking lot. And that's, it probably figured, that was figured the first time as a same width all the way from front to back.
So it was just there, that parallel parking from the front of the building to the back of the building?
Right. I'm pretty pleased with the way that the estimate that he's got in here on almost everything. It's a little better. You with him?
My question is, how much do we have to spend?
We spend what we got budgeted.
What do we have budgeted, Mike?
He's got a little bit over 600,000 left in what was budgeted.
What was budgeted previous?
A million.
Go ahead and tell him why, why that's, why it's lower, why what you've got left to spend based on the budgets because of paying previous, is it from paying previous?
Well, that's from some paving we did earlier this fiscal year. That came out of a million, so you got 600, 625. That was budgeted. So if you're going by the budget, that's your number.
By the time it gets bid and all the turnaround process and get started and all that, I guess that's, number's going to change a little. Of course, this is an estimate. We could come under. If we did come under, I mean, I always see stuff, you know, and then it don't, only when we're writing a move for paving project. Frisco, that runs from the bank down the side of the road, on this side of the road. I believe Frisco actually goes across Midway Drive in front of the Cajun Connection out to, and dead ends out there more petroleum. I don't know if y'all familiar with that stretch. I mean, that's a little small piece. I mean, that, we got, you know, we got that business there that has quite a bit of traffic on the weekends, and that road, that little stretch, that little piece that's in there, actually, it needs some attention bad.
I thought if we've got the money, I'd assume we do. We've done a lot on the streets in the last few years, and I think that helps our city a lot.
It does.
So that's just my thought now.
If nobody's got any question or, I mean, I think we've got a decent group of streets that we want to do here. I think we... Of course, there can always be, there could be more than, I think, the streets that we've got listed in here, I think really needs an attention.
So we only have 600,000?
That's what he said, that you've got left out of your budget.
It read in all this, that's...
Right. We, you know, we're transferring money to CD's every day. I mean, if you want, if you want to stay within the budget, you probably don't need to spend over 600,000. If you want to stay what's budgeted. But he asked the question, if we had the money, we got the money. But you've got a budget that you got. I mean, what, you've used up some of your budget money. And then there again, you may have various other areas in your budget that you haven't used the budget. You know, the budget's a guideline. If we go by it, I don't think it's going to work you to go over, you know, that amount of money or what you've got left in the budget before it's paid.
Well, we got money in CDs, we got money in general funds. It's the people's money, it's the roads.
Well, then I'm all for all the roads. I was just thinking about who needed to consider...
That's 15. Well, actually, just 13 roads.
Just they're big, they're good roads. I mean, they're just, a lot of people own those roads. My recommendation to go forward and go ahead and pave, let him do a bid, put this out for bid, and let's see what the bid look like, and make the final decision after we get the bids back in. Get a motion to do that. James, Keith's second. All in favor. You got anything else? Old business?
About a minute. Cover. Last week, two weeks ago, down about 10 rounds of those places.
Yeah, did you go by that?
Yeah. Me dug out and everything, you know?
Oh, I'm still waiting on Luke. He hadn't, I wasn't on him yet. Do you see where it comes down? All that road off of the highway that comes in that gully, it turns and goes to end that pipe and goes under that road and then goes back down and goes back on the road and then goes back out.
We got two different ways. You got the road coming from Jack's going down through there, one coming off the hill.
The reason I wanted to see what we're going to do about that is because, you know, it's not going, it's not in this list, but we need to fix that prior to, we need to do what we're going to do prior to putting Nickel Street on the paving list. But I'm waiting on Luke to come up and give me some engineered thought on how we need to fix that. And I need to get the bottom of the water for him to see if that's a sewer line, a main sewer line or anything that's in that other side, as to why there's not a cover on that other side. There's no cover where it comes off that hill.
I haven't seen any tops either.
Not that sounds decent.
Only thing, yeah.
It's in the middle of the road, sure it is, but I think it may get out of the middle of the road on that side. Or it comes down off that hill on one side or the other, goes into the main line if it catches, it catches. Yeah.
That's still Thorne Dale right there.
Sir?
That's still Thorne Dale, come down there then.
Thorne Dale meets Nickel. That's how I get. Dean?
I was just going to ask, I couldn't answer.
Dean?
I don't have anything else to do. I've got, I've acquired a couple of phone numbers about a local business, recycling business that might pick our plastic up. I just hadn't reached them. I actually forgot about it this afternoon. I got the numbers and tried to call, but I didn't get an answer. But I know we'd spoken about it.
If you need me to help call or whatever. On the old business for sirens of Brett, I think we, there were a couple of comments from the last meeting about, I didn't read all of them. We had, we had several comments on them. There was no, there was no negative comments about not doing something. There's more comments about saying that they need to be fixed, that siren needs to be fixed. I don't know if y'all had anybody come up to y'all or discussed it before, is that weather siren that's, there's a lot of interest in saying that it needs to be repaired. So if you still want to keep that around, table it, see what we've come up with and find, but we need to keep that in our thoughts about what we're going to do.
We'll need to find out what we found left. Two, three, check the batteries.
Done it on the fat, fat one. I'll ask him, I'll ask him come to the next council meeting. Well, they started, they came down today, which I hadn't reached. Mike was going to call me back. They come down to start the project at the Antique Mall for a water issue. Mike Gale, I don't know if he told y'all, he's, he's figured out how much water he's got out of there and he's pumped out over 16,000 gallon of water out of the bottom of that basement. He's been keeping up with it, I reckon.
What, every time?
So it don't, it's just, it's just not really hard to understand that how that water don't ever change. It's a constant running stream coming in.
How long did it take to get that 16,000?
He pumps it out twice a day up there, using my wetback.
Is that within a couple of weeks?
I hope it's a bid, but if this one, the little one, she's staying down there.
He's, I don't, what I'm saying, they came down today, was supposed to start, and he called, and they've had a, the guys that came said this, this, and this needed to be done, and that wasn't in their scope of work, but they had not discussed that with me prior to the estimate, looking at it. So, but he told me he would call me back if it didn't look like they were going to start what they were here to do. So, but I didn't hear back from him, so I assumed they started. I'll reach out to him after the meeting and see what the, what the verdict was.
He called me before I got one to hurt my phone, right?
Mike? Have y'all been by the armory, seeing how progress is coming over there? Y'all, I mean, Brett's open for opinions if you see that anything needs to be, that needs to be added or changed. I think me and Brett have been back and forth a little bit on the outside lighting. I've went by there myself at night, which I hadn't got back with Brett because I wanted to go back, look at it. I've seen the pictures in the light that's on and kind of toward the canopy that's built there. I think it's too, it's too bright. I don't know if I like it with the other lights. You know, maybe they can change it. I'm going to look at it again. I'll try to at night.
It's all painted now except for the trim work. Should have it painted by any week.
What did you decide to do upon nick that canopy?
He started on it.
What's he putting on it?
Mine was, it was up, it was a lot cheaper than, um, as far as it had been done, it was about three thousand. I had no idea that driving or whatever it was, I had no idea.
We, we, we hadn't run into a big issue, but we ran into a little bit of an issue with the glass, the glass part of it. Kind of offended, I guess offended the local glass company because getting more process. But I mean, that, I hadn't had a chance to, you know, have talked with them one-on-one, but he's refused other work that we've asked him to look at in the CD to park. He's got offended because of the process that I was taking to be fair, you know, to make sure we is in line for how to price it pricing-wise and getting different prices. I felt like we needed at least three competitive prices or two or three competitive prices on that project. Even, even though when you do get a competitive, get competitive prices, the council still has the right to a certain amount overage for what the price would be to choose a local person. But we, we've had just a little bit, we've got, I don't know if you've noticed it, but we've got the brickwork done, a lot of windows have been bricked like it's supposed to be, which wasn't to put the glass back in. But I'm, I'm working on, you know, we got the glass process. And I'm also still working on the storm shelter park. The last storm, we, you know, if y'all familiar how the mitigation works or whatever, before, it has to be up to, I think it's, is it $8 million statewide for FEMA to step in, and so much countywide. What we were trying to do when we were in Washington is maybe to get FEMA to let the eastern part of Mississippi that had the damage and the western part of Alabama had the damage, let those two states be a combined project versus each state being separate because they were so close on the state line of incidents happening, tornadoes, you know, in different places over there close to that line, and that damage, those two combined would make coming here closer and meeting the threshold that has to be met. And that's what we were trying to get them to do is let us work as a combined state, Mississippi and Alabama. FEMA assistance for us. Disaster. I spoke with Luke again on Midway Drive for that spot that we... The cupboards that, you know, when we first bid that, it came in way over budget what FEMA is going to pay. And the cupboards, the cupboards that they want to put in there, that they want us to put in there was, was the sewer line and the water line that's already stationary there that's on the west side of that ditch was, is creating a problem for us being able to use the cupboards that they wanted us to use because they were too high, and we've had a problem with the sewer line. And so Luke has asked if they'll, if we can go down, down to a different size with more cover or whatever, and it's got to change the scope of work and resubmit it. So it's, it's, it's been an ongoing deal trying to get that project underway. But he, he assured me that it's just back and forth with FEMA for us. You know, when we had all the flooding, I guess it's been two years ago now. And they've got to fix it right there at Mallard and Midway. At Mallard, Midway, we've got a, we had a wall that fell in right there at that cupboard at the intersection of Midway, and then the road's sinking. That as well, we're trying to get that included in it. And an update on Highland over here, Rob and, we've got that cupboard put in, we're going to quit flooding, Mr. Beasley's place down below behind, there will be a beep behind Sherwin, or Pier Station.
When were they done, today?
Nah, they done about three, four weeks ago.
It stopped up?
Nah.
I looked in there yesterday, looked like it was stopped up.
Nah, it's, there's a pipe, there's a, it's got a, it's a pipe with a top on it. It's got a grate on it. It looks like it's level with the dirt and things, but it's got a grate on there. I guess if nobody else has got any other old business, I haven't got with Mark on the park. I'll try to reach out to him this week, for the weeks ahead for us, what the community center were going to do with that. It goes up, out past building on the north side. Gina's got a lot going on down at the parking lot. She sent everybody texts or emails asking, inviting everybody to come down to the park, different things they've got going on. If you get opportunity, go down. Uh, nobody else got any other old business? I need to ask for motion to pay the bills. Nobody got a ton of any questions about... Tim made a motion, Gina's second. All in favor. I need to ask for a motion to a general. Keith, Gina, all in favor. Thank y'all for showing up.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a lawnmower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero-turn motors. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Guen and Fayette. We've been serving the people of northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner, operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition. We've been family owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guen to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives that lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.